I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Out here, a marching to adopt the agenda.
A second.
Oh, she's making second to in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first item on the discussion is the lodging ordinance tax. And if you'll look in your packet, there's comparison of lodging tax from other cities. And I want you to kind of average that out to something about eight and a half percent. California doesn't have a state tax, and eight and a half percent plus state tax. And we thought about six percent. And that's... And I was just...I was thinking that the county's getting, they're getting six percent. If we go six, that takes away twelve percent of state tax.
I would make note that I also did some checking around, and as you found, six to nine percent is the norm for communities across Oregon. And I also found out and have some feelers out with other areas. Anytime that there is a lodger's tax, the community that is incorporated collects that tax. The county collects in unincorporated areas. Just food for thought as we move forward. And I do have some feelers out with Portland or Dallas.
I can tell you that all coastal communities that we looked at, we're looking at some of the logistics of this, have both. So it's actually, I do think a lot of the places have...
No, they have the county tax, but they don't have the same tax in the same jurisdictions.
Right, but, well, actually, on the coast, they do. They overlap. So it's kind of a...but I think a lot of the other places worked together and kind of figured out a... I don't know that the counties wanted to do that because theirs is not, their tax is not restricted the same way ours is because it was done pre the tourism split. And that's going to be, the other thing I'm going to caution you guys on is that the overhead, for whether it's a three percent, four percent, five or six percent tax, is going to be the same for, because it's going to be the same amount, you know, regardless of what percentage, it's going to be the same amount of work to collect it. So just logistically, make sure that you're actually getting bang for your buck, you're going to collect it. Because otherwise, you're, because again, you only get to keep thirty percent, which functionally, I think, is really to cover the overhead of collecting the tax. It's kind of the way I read the authorization for TLT, for the TLT taxes. So again, the other thing that I'm going to recommend, if you guys do decide to adopt something, I would give an effective date sometime next spring. The reason why is there's some infrastructure, I think you guys are going to want to set up first, so these are restricted funds. You need to make sure you've got, one, a tourism fund set up, two, everybody, all of the different entities registered, because you also need to, your tax as proposed will cover Airbnb and all of that, which is going to require a little bit of searching by town staff to kind of get all of those groups registered. And then, three, you need to constitute a advisory committee or contract with an agency to give the funds to, to make sure. Because there is, these are, these funds have very specific purposes, and often, communities are hauled over court over them, over how they're being used. So, and there's very strict guidelines on it. And because we haven't done that before, we're going to want to make sure you've got all of that stuff in place to properly allocate things of that nature. So that's why I'm recommending, ask the talker, the bird, everything, what they need to get set up. That's what I'm recommending, if you guys do decide to do it, I would maybe have it go operationally, maybe April. So that way, it gives them time to get all the infrastructure in, constitute your advisory board, get all of that in place. That way, when you start getting funds coming in quarterly, then you can allocate them how you want them allocated. And then solicit proposals when people come in and have kind of all of that there, because then you can defend, if anybody ever challenges it, how you're allocating it. Because that was, that was a...
I would agree with you in regards to, we need more time because there is an awful lot of infrastructure that needs to be done here at Town Hall.
Yeah, I'm not saying don't do it, I mean, that, you guys are fully directed to do it, I'm just saying, make sure that it's in, in place, exactly.
You mentioned advisory board, I'm not sure, I, I know, I'm sorry that I missed previous discussions on this.
There are multiple different ways of allocating the seventy percent of the funds that are for restricted tourism purposes. One is the council does it themselves, just as the, out of a tourism fund. The second is contracting with a third-party agency, that, with an agreement they have to spend on X, Y, and Z. So you basically hire somebody. The third is what a lot of communities do, which is, which is a TLT advisory board, which different tourism entities, whatever, apply for use of the funds. And that can also be town, the town coming to that advisory board as well, to make recommendations. And then, on yearly or quarterly or however based as you want to do it, maybe allocation so those taxes come in.
And that's just for the seventy percent that goes to tourism?
Yes. And it does seem like quite a few, that seems to be the majority approach, is the TLT advisory board that's called communities. That's, in my review, most of them have, so what I think, that's one reason I'd like you guys to delay implementation, if you guys decide to approve it tonight, is so that we can get kind of a summary of all of the different resolutions ordinances that establish those committees, so that we're not reinventing the wheel. Because you guys are doing something that, like Mike has alluded to, should have been done a long time ago, and you don't want to completely just start from zero, so.
Jeff, in regards to doing it today, too, I have hesitations in moving forward, because I, in reviewing other occupancy tax usages and the financial forms that we, as you say, are going to have to instigate here at the Town of Lakeview, both with the lodgers and with the state, and everything else, and the state, I guess, can handle it as well. All those decisions have to be made, but also the, we have no mention of who is going to administer other, I mean, in our ordinance as it is, so I'm thinking we should incorporate that in there, from what I've seen from other ordinancees and other communities.
Some do, but I, I think you ought to do it two stages. I think you do one to establish the tax, and then the second one, I would do a second ordinance, two, exactly establish the board with the makeup. I think you get, this is already a thirteen-page ordinance. It's getting, and again, it's partially that long, because unfortunately, we've entered the world of Expedia and different online bookers. So it's the lead ordinance cities, and I wouldn't want to vary from their suggestion, because again, that's been done with a lot of work about chasing people that aren't collecting the tax. So that's why I, I would not recommend bearing very much from the model that the lead ordinance cities has crafted, because they've been through a lot of input, trying to chase down entities that aren't properly paying the taxes, because that's been a huge problem with things like Airbnb. Again, I don't know how much of that is in the, I haven't, you know, looked like you on some of those sites, but it's there.
You haven't taken vacation here yet?
No, that's not usually how I occasionally take vacation. But that is, that is some of the challenges of, and I'm also thinking that there might be some software programs that some of the other jurisdictions can recommend that can help, or a component to Cassell that can be used to track some of this type of stuff. Because again, you want very, very bulletproof accounting on this to make sure that it's going to the proper purposes. And like I said, it's, this advisory board is not a rubber stamp. They really need to look very close at what is being asked for, because projects have to be truly tourism-based, they, they're long-term ones, they've got to really, I mean, there's, there's quite a bit of state regulations around those various things. So it's money, but it comes with a lot of strings. So that's the, that's why I recommend you make sure you set it at a level that you're actually going to be able to afford administrative costs. And legally, you guys are allowed to do whatever you want, but it could be a money loser if it's at too low of a level for what you're doing. So that's just the only, and that's just my discussions with town staff and...
When you talk to these other towns, Mike, or any of, you have, and they have their rates, are, did you ask them if they were, you know, making money from it, or?
Oh yeah, and, and we'll just tell you that, and since you did miss the meeting, just for our knowledge, we inquired with Roberta and Darwin, I think, woke up the figures from in-town collections from Lakeview Lodger's facilities. And it was nearing one hundred thousand, I think, a year. So, you know, it's a pretty significant amount of money that can be used to improve tourist-related...
And facilities.
Facilities within the community, or are, and of course, to promote tourism, to enhance the tourist stays in our community, so.
Yeah, two, as Mike alluded to, the two components that's a lot of work, tourism-related facilities with, you know, certain percent, you know, with certain acquire, with certain restrictions related to that. And then, the cleanest category is promotional campaigns, et cetera, that you have no problems with. So, you know, an organization comes in that's going to be doing a convention here or something like that for exploring out back order when space in Lakeview, you know, those kind of things are all very easy sells. It's the facility stuff that gets more complicated, which unfortunately is where a lot of places want to spend it, because you want to get more bang for your buck, but they really, they'd really like to use it more for direct marketing or visitor center or something along those lines. Heads less restrictions.
Well, Mike, you think you want to move on with this, or should we put together an advisory committee? I thought we talked about that at one time, too.
No, I think that, that the advisory committee, just to give Sandy an idea of what most of the organizations within the community that I've talked with, and in past organizations that I've been involved with, the advisory board consists of a member-in-large, of course, is what most boards have on them. But the other members might be lodgers from our community that are involved in actual tourism-related businesses, restaurants, just representing the lodging industry, it might be a five or a seven-member board, there might be two from lodging, one from the general public, one from tourist-related activities, the chamber, whatever it might be. But you have a well-rounded base, and as Jeff just recommended, we could sit here all day with the materials that I've brought and try to hash out the infrastructure that I think can probably be better handled within Town Hall and Roberta and the staff here. And we don't get logged down in that regard, as long as our ordinance reflects that we'll follow the procedures of a lodger's tax advisory board. And I know it's transient lodger's tax advisory board, I'm sorry.
And my suggestion is why don't you adopt them as a pair? So you adopt the one establishing the tax, and then the other one is, and then to this, once we've established the fund, and the second one will state, this is how the, this is how the tax can be spent. In consultation with this, you know, with the recommendations from the board, and then, but ultimately, I would not dare to get your authority, I mean, the board makes recommendations, you guys approve generally the... But they also, it's considered like the planning commission. Exactly, and usually, you want to follow the recommendation, because they've done all the labor, they've done that way, too. You've done a process that has a record, so if somebody decides to challenge something, well, one, you guys, you know, we've announced this meeting of this lodger's advisory board at this date, nobody showed up, or leave only three people, and now you're complaining about it. Then a court's reviewing it, or an administrator is going to go, you had opportunity to be heard, and you chose not to do with it. So that seems to be one of the reasons. Otherwise, you're going to be doing a lot of, if you're just administering it yourselves, you're going to be doing a lot of work sessions.
So what you're basically recommending is, we not have an advisory board on setting this up, but we do get one after we have it set up to...
I would set it up at the same time, is what I'm recommending, simultaneously.
Yes, I understand that, but yeah.
And two separate ordinances, yes.
Two separate ordinances, okay.
And then that way, you got all...
One, they're referring to the other.
And again, I would still recommend, just from a logistics standpoint, to make sure everything goes in place, with all the stuff you have to do to register and everything else, that you, maybe when you adopt it, you give it an effective date. You know, it's automatic thirty days, I would go longer than that. That's why I'm suggesting maybe sometime this spring, just for, that, that people can get, plus, you're not going to get, this is the, and I think Mike will tell you that, too, this is definitely the down season for...
Up season right now, I think, so.
You're not going to want to put that burden on top of things, especially with...
When collections are not so great, so.
Exactly.
I, I think the ordinance is drawn up is, is a good ordinance. I reviewed it, and I think that it is a good solid ordinance. As far as the rate, I know that was the one thing that was thrown out. And also the inclusion of, but I think it could be included in the other, that the, and I've got one here that allows people to waive the...
Actually, I was asked to, I was asked to, to not exclude federal employees. In fact, the way it reads currently is that federal employees are, and you're allowed to do that, they're most, and I'm not sure why, most state and local, whatever, local municipalities exempt federal employees, but you don't have to. And so my understanding is what, you guys did not want to exempt federal employees. And if that is, if you don't want to, that's the way it currently reads. I specifically removed that, that they are not...
So it is only federal employees, it's not state employees and government?
Everybody pays, is what you're saying.
Everybody, the way it works is...
Well, I think that's the way it should be, but I, so, well, so then we don't need an inclusion of that, of that nature in there. I know we haven't heard some concern on behalf of the lodgers and...
Well, that will at least let the, because with that, with it silent, there can be some confusion on it, it's not silent anymore. There's a section in there, under the tax section itself, that specifically states including federal employees or employees of federal instrumentality, the Red Cross.
Okay, so it's covered.
And you guys are not charging lodging tax, okay. Say we have a flood again, and the Red Cross puts a bunch of people in motel rooms, that's exempted. So you're not, you're not profiting from a disaster, something along those lines, and that's one of the reasons the lead work, plus, I don't think they're allowed to do that under federal state statutes anywhere. But you're not getting, you know, charged with Red Cross lodger's tax when they're putting up a bunch of people that under disaster declarations, something along those lines, so.
Well, that was the one concern, is inclusion of that into this, and my concern of, should we have wording that mentioned the lodger's tax advisory board, or currently the lodger's tax advisory board? But with what you've explained, Jeff, we can do that procedurally, and I would recommend, or not recommend, I just would say, my feelings are that we've got to get solid ordinance, and I think if we go with the lower end of what we find in Oregon, six percent, that's every bit due to our community, as it is to every one of these other communities that you checked on. And whether they share or not, it makes no difference, the communities are still getting their share of six percent or more in Oregon communities, and we should get at least that ourselves. So I would recommend six percent, that's what we move forward with at this point. If y'all want to go higher, that's, I guess, something we could discuss, or if you want to go lower, but I, I would not recommend that. I, I think that we should get what we have coming.
Anybody else? No? Can I go first?
No, fine.
Okay, so I appreciate the work you did with Burn's, on these numbers. I think that it's, it's very telling on, on what other communities are doing, and I think also, you know, location rise. I mean, I try to now analyze these numbers, I see Burns is the highest, and again, the most remote out of this, as well as Alturis. I mean, La Pine likely lower than Ben, lower than Frankville, mainly for the fact that they're trying to keep people there. I'm curious what Hines is, you know, it's not on this list, most of the motels in Burns are, Hines are in Hines. I would imagine it's very similar to Nine, but knowing that those two communities sometimes bicker amongst themselves, that maybe the...
A little duel going on there.
The other option...
I was on Burns Council before.
The other one would be John Day, and Candy and them, in Candy City, they don't...
Just John Day.
But we can reach out further, too, and just get a more accurate...
So, so here's kind of where I'm at, though, is because, I mean, I, I agree with Mike that, you know, I wish, I wish these numbers, I kind of wish that they were higher in a way. I don't know when the last time these ordinances were changed, and the percentages were changed. Again, because it, to me, it comes back to, we're not taxing local people in this case. We're taxing people who are coming into our community who are almost obligated to stay here because of the remote nature of this location. And when we talk about federal employees, we're trying, a hundred percent glad that we are not exempting them in, in an ordinance, whatever the rate might end up being, if we even adopt, is that everybody pays. I mean, there's a lot of our rooms and motels are taken up by federal employees, you know, during, you know, maybe non-disaster-type events. And so I think that that's fair, I mean, I totally think it's fair. You know, the way they write, you know, get with their accounts and write off taxes that they're paying in places, that's, you know, something they'll figure out. But I think everybody should be paying the same. So, you know, none of these show county tax, you know, so I'm kind of surprised at that, to tell you the truth, especially in some of these rural locations, that maybe there was an accounting tax first, and then, I mean, for like La Pine, was there no Deschutes County tax when they finally incorporated? I mean, that's kind of interesting to me, that there's not overall Deschutes County tax, so I'm, I'm...
Well, that's what I...
These numbers are, I hope that they're a hundred percent correct, but I'm wondering if we maybe asked the wrong question.
I, I did ask the questions, and what happened in those counties where there are new incorporations, the county backs off.
The county stops.
But, you know, I mean, it's, it's, the county works with unincorporated communities and, and unincorporated areas, and so...
So the only problem I have with all of that is that we haven't had a real discussion with the county, and I, you know, for us to...
They've known we've been moving forward for a long time, and they haven't wanted to come forward.
Individually, they know, but as a board, they haven't discussed it, and so, you know, I think that it's, you know, for us to expect them to back off, I don't think we're going to get there. Now, do I think they should? Probably, but the problem with that is a hundred thousand dollars, seventy, which is going directly to the entity that they've, you know, allocated that to, which I'm assuming for the most of it is the chamber.
Chamber and Fairgrounds, the Lakeview Fairgrounds.
This group's intention to put it just to that group, and so...
Well, you've got to remember, all of the counties is not restricted. Theirs was prior to the new change in the ordinance, so they can do a hundred percent whatever direction. They have no, they don't have to allocate it, they can, it all goes to general fund.
Well, and actually, what they did is they designated like Northlake and, or Disaster, they, they did it a little bit different at that time. Now, the newer, yeah, so they had Northlake and our ambulance, you know, just different things that they designated their funds to.
And I definitely don't want to undertone at all, or, you know, say for a second that I don't appreciate the work, you know, like the chamber and Fairgrounds are doing, I don't think any of us would say that, so don't, don't...
Not at all.
Could be wrong, I'm just, this group, what I keep hearing, and at least from Mike and myself, is that I would like to see an advisory board set up if we go a route. But I'm getting more and more concerned on overhead, and does this actually, you know, how much time is actually spent on the collecting and the bookkeeping? You know, if it's part of our audit for the thirty, and then the seventy percent, if another board set up, do they fall under us? Or can they be a totally independent board? When you said contracted idea, I thought that was a whole lot different than what I...
The contract, what some communities do is they...
Is, is the contract of the...
Yeah, they contract their chamber of commerce, I believe, and they, and the contract specifies that it has to be spent on these purposes, and they account to it. So that's another route that some communities go, and it's a...
But ultimately, if we were to collect thirty, I mean, how much time are we really, how much overhead are we really losing out of that, is what I'm wondering. I mean, when we get our audit, it's going to be the same, I can't, I can't imagine it being, well, we're going to have to charge a little more for your audit every year because of this group coming in. That, that don't make any sense. Staff time, I don't see that much staff time.
It's going to be a lot of initial setup, and it's also, when the receipts come in, and then also, what you also have, there's an old term for the military that I think prevails true here, you don't expect it, you can't expect it. You're going to have to have staff coming in, and you should have staff coming in, the motels, every so often, coming in and looking over the books. Because if you don't, and so there is, there is going to be a staff cost, that's why the thirty percent was at least left there, so that for enforcement and everything else. And I'm sorry, folks, you're going to have to do enforcement to make this work, and it's just the way...
So, but, but like the county, I mean, we don't have one person or even a half-time person dedicated to that. I mean, it's just part of some of these duties that...
The county is pretty much relying on the chamber to do those duties. The chamber places advertising, the chamber does all of the marketing for the entire county. It's my understanding, the way it's been explained to me by their board, by the county commissioners, that's what is pretty much bundled out to the, the fairgrounds, and in this Southern, and the fairgrounds, and the chamber receive those funds.
But you're actually not, I don't think the chamber's checking the books.
No, you're talking...
Oh, no, no, no.
No, we're, no, we're not. We're not, we're not going into hotels, and, yeah, no.
Yeah, please.
Uh, no, they have not ever done that.
Yeah, and that's why, I mean, and, I mean, I don't think anybody did, they're just hoping that it's the right figure and trusting that, which, if we don't collect it, I don't see how we could be ordained or, or, you know, accused of, because managing a fund we never got either.
There's kind of a catch system there, because the state collects lodger's tax funds.
As well, yeah.
And so they, they know the...
Percentages and percentages.
The Internal Revenue Service reports for each of those entities that are reporting as well, and so they can kind of get a pretty good gauge, and if they see that, they'll probably contact the community.
So now that we've talked this through, I'm a little bit less concerned about overhead, I really am.
I don't think it will cost anywhere near the thirty percent, I, I really don't see it that...
I think it's a win, when I, when I think of a hundred thousand dollars, and when we heard our hotel owners say that you could almost double what you get just when you actually start charging the feds, and other people who are getting this exempt form, you know, we, I'm, that number may grow to a hundred fifty thousand per year, which, whatever percentage we go with, at six, it could be the same, or... So it's, it's a big chunk of money, again, that I feel, you know, right now, we're currently the lowest. I mean, by at least one percent, and I say we when we're getting zero, actually, but if you supplement county in for the cities that are listed on here, it's still below us. So however, I, I, you know, I was hoping that we could probably go for like a six, I'm leaning more towards like a four. And why I say four is because I'll put this right at ten, which is the combined county and city, which equals Alturis, which is a little bit more than Burns. And, but with this notion, then we review this after, say, two years, and then we negotiate, you know, try to talk with county and actually work out a plan where they come back, or...
Why would, why would the county ever lower theirs, folks? Because the problem is, no, no, and the other reason they would lower it is because it's unrestricted. They can't, they will never raise it, because then they have to do the split, bring it above.
And start over, because the ordinance has...
Negotiate is probably the wrong word, but at least have that dialogue with them, because if they did, then I'd say we, we don't, don't lower than ten, we just stand.
But we can always be open to visit them, I mean...
Correct, I, I'm just telling you, I don't know that the county would ever give that up, because again, they've got the old form of tax that they, that they, that they can do whatever they want with. If they, messing around that they do may trigger them, then losing how they're currently allocating it, that's, that's a concern, I mean...
Not to get too far in the weeds, but is, are they able to up their percentage?
Sure, sure, they can up it to whatever percent they want.
But then, it, but any, any raises...
The increase would follow that up.
Being under the seventy thirty, yes.
That additional part would be under the new one of, of the state.
Correct.
Well, I'm still, I'm still leaning towards a four, maybe even three and a half, only because that would be the difference between Burns and Alturis, which I think is really our only good...
Darwin, can I ask this? Okay, the, the city of Burns is getting how much? I mean, what, you're comparing us with Burns, the city of Burns, the town is getting nine percent, and you're saying we should take three and a half as Lakeview?
Well, only because the counties, if the, counties aren't going to back out of it, I don't think we should go higher than...
It's not, it does, to worry about the county, we're doing our thing, and we rightfully have it. You can find out from the lead of Oregon Cities, who recommends we start one, who recommends that we do at least, the, the other towns of, of the state of Oregon are doing it, and that's at least six percent.
Do they recommend that we do this?
They're recommending to every community that would like to get into lodger's tax, they have a, a complete brochure on how to get involved, and that's what we follow.
So what's interesting, so is, is Lake County the only county in the state that's actually collecting this?
You said no, on the coast?
No, I think, I think Lincoln, the county, Lincoln City and the county that surrounds it, I believe, I've seen both, and so...
Very few counties.
Well, I wonder what, I wonder what the county absorbs, and then I wonder what's...
And again, I, I, and again, it might have been the politics of the time, most of the cit, again, most of your motels generally fall within municipalities, because you're leading municipal sewer, you're needing whatever, and a lot of the counties may never have stepped in, because the other cities beat them to the punch and just got them done. So a lot of them may not have it, because it just wasn't something that they wanted to, you know, put on top of what was done. But again, Lakeview didn't do anything, so you're kind of stuck with the result.
So ultimately, though, if, I don't see, under your reasoning, we might as well go nine or so, but I can't...
I said I'm fine with six percent, if you want to go higher, that's fine, I mean, you can, if you wanted to get in the midst of six to nine percent, the average of Oregon communities, you know, go with it. You know, seven and a half percent, let's go ahead and do it. I mean, it's, it's what other shares are given to other community, why should we be different or take less than another Oregon community? I mean, you're saying, you're comparing us to Burns, but Burns is getting nine percent.
What I'm saying is, the tax for the, you know, at the hotel, right now...
But as you said, that's passed along to people that are passing through. It's nothing...
I know, but what I'm saying is, it's going in the community, it's still funneled, whether, whether we funnel it or the county funnels, it's still getting funneled, no.
Well, it's getting funneled to promote tourism, and you've got to reach out to outline areas to bring tourists to our community. You can't just spend it right here in Lakeview and say, you know, if you spend it on, on K L C R radio, you get people that are passing through, but you're not gonna get people that are coming from distant communities to visit your town and stay in your lodger's facilities. So you've gotta spend those money. That's what the tourism dollars are for. And the one thing I, I wanna point this out...
Well, when I go to a motel, I call on the phone and ask what the price is, and they give me the price before taxes. When I go and give my card, I don't even look at the tax.
Well, and I wanted to say too, that the communities that I've been talking to in this state and other states as of recent, they're, they're astonished that, that we don't collect it, but yet there's already a, a tax for like, who's taxed in our community. They, they're astounded that
Yeah.
the town is not getting it. When I came to the town council uh, and, and started attending their meetings, my first question to Ray Sims as the town manager newly acquired as a town manager from, I mentioned, the county. The county administrator worked for the three county commissioners, came over here, his answer to me was, "The county already has it, we can't, we won't." Okay, I took that. I sat with it for a while. It didn't rest well with me, and I'm sorry, I'm pursuing what the town should have and should have every bit of six percent or more. And I don't think we should give it up for anyone, and, and so, you know, the one thing that I find that is lacking from the town of Lakeview is just what I was told when I went to some of the initial meetings at the League of Oregon Cities is, when we do something in Lakeview, we do things for Lake County. I agree, we should all work together as a county and as governments, but we shouldn't be branded as Lake County. We have our own identity as Lakeview, and we've never been able to use that. We can't promote it. We can't do anything, because it's the Lake County Everything Chamber, and I'm told by the Chamber and the commissioners, we promote the entirety of the county, even though there's other chambers in our, in our county. You, you promote the entire county. The commissioners have, you know, sworn to me that's what they delve the money out to the Chamber for. That's all right. I don't have a problem with you promoting the entire, but for however long this town has gone without those proceeds to promote its own identity, it's losing, and will continue to lose. So Lakeview needs to stand up and be its own.
You answered my question that I was gonna ask you earlier, why Lake County didn't have it, why we dropped it out.
I, I...
You answered my question, and I agree with you, that Lakeview itself needs to be recognized and not just a chamber.
Have its own identity. And it's lacking.
Well, I don't think any of us are opposed to this table, so, you know.
I'm sorry, I, it's, it's a passion with me, and I'm sorry.
I think we have a ways to go to meet agreement on a couple of things, including the percent. Um, I mean, I'm okay with six or seven, either one, I don't know where it should be that higher, but maybe I could be persuaded, I don't know. Um, but anyway, we have other things we need to think about in getting this completed now, and, and the advisory board is another thing that we had not thought about, or I, I, I mean, maybe you have talked about it, but anyway, I wasn't aware of that conversation, so.
So you've looked...
I've learned some things, and I'm still thinking.
Darwin, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you. Um, you've looked, you've done some research, just as Mike's done, on, on what that makeup of that board would look like, and kinda...
It, it varies community by community, and, because again, different communities are different. I mean, different communities have, for example, some communities only have one or two service clubs versus, I mean, there's a, there's a variety of different stakeholders you can put into that. The other option, too, is if you don't wanna mess with an advisory board, is contracting with a third-party entity, like a Chamber of Commerce or something like that.
An advertising agency.
Exactly, an advertising agency, et cetera, and then there, and then that puts then fully responsible to account for, okay, you're gonna spend this on X, Y, and Z, but that does limit you then to spending it on tourism-related facilities unless it's related to that entities. But some people find that simpler, because then you're not having to constitute another board, so the question, and the reason some places have chosen to do that versus others is, they can't find enough people. Sometimes you guys have problems filling boards to begin with.
Yeah, and everybody that's audit board's already on two or three boards, so, at least.
Right, but on the same token, if you...
Out, out of the citizenry, we have sometimes a problem filling board decisions.
Correct.
Not necessarily...
Do we have good examples of what, like, projects, you know, when it says facilities, you know, towards tourism, what? I mean, we're not talking, can we stretch that as far as to say we need a cover on the pool?
I think we could stretch it as far as we, I don't know about a cover on the pool, it might be considered that, but you could also say that our community needs some restrooms to accommodate people who visit and don't go in and use every restroom and restaurant and everything else. Just use a restroom.
Facilities are, facilities are the, facilities are the tough one, though. That's, that, that, they're a tough one, because they've really gotta be, that's the one that gets the most scrutiny. Marketing campaigns, that type of stuff, generally, safer.
It's pretty...
I'm, I'm not saying you can't. I'm just saying it's gotta be really heavily analyzed to make sure, and you're probably gonna be running a lot of those requests past me on the facility side of it to make sure, if you don't contract with somebody. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I'm just telling you that's, with those kinda projects, you've gotta really
Make sure the state's gonna, gonna allow it.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Can I ask a question, Tom?
Yeah.
Did you do, you have done some research on this, right?
Yes, I have.
On the benefits, or the, which you're beside?
Benefits, some research is, you know, do travelers actually look at the amount of tax they're gonna pay before they make their vacation decisions? And it pretty much backs up what, and I'm sorry, Matt, I...
Sandy.
Backs up what Sandy said. People will run, whatever their preferred program is, look and see what the room cost is. Nobody checks the tax rate.
I never even think about it, and they're not gonna change your plans, being a remote area, and that's where you're...
No, and that would be my other thing. It's based on the conversation with DMOs, RDMOs across the state, is, you know, especially somewhere as remote as this. Somebody's ready to stop for the night, they're gonna stop. They're not gonna go in, go through the check and see if they're gonna, what? Your total tax rate is twelve percent? No, I leave, I'll run another hour. This doesn't happen.
Well, it's probably a lot higher than that in many places.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, Portland is substantially higher, but they also have convention facilities that are here at this point.
And I'm not, you know, I would really still like to see something, you know, however this money's spent, that advisory board kinda keeps a running total for the projects that have been done, puts a little flyer to each motel saying, hey, this is how this money's been spent, it's been spent a good way. We did the transparency, but also, just to, I, I think it actually brings people back to a community when they say, wow, these people are spending this tax well, and it's not just going to overhead for a staff position or something. So, you know, the advisory board, I hope that they take that, you know, later in the consideration.
I, I brought a wealth of information, but it would, that's why I, I like Jeff's idea of forming the advisory board, because I, I would recommend, in the interim, if you have a chance to go on the website, here in the state of Oregon, the community of Corvallis has a very well-instituted lodger's tax program. You can get it off there. They, they give you everything. There are not too many communities I've found in Oregon that give you that total summation of all the materials. Another one that I'm familiar with is the city of Carlsbad, New Mexico, which is a tourism neck, and they also have their, and, and you find, from state to state to state, lodger's tax is lodger's tax. I refer to it as lodger's tax. That's why I worked with it for years and years. Here, it's a transient lodger's tax. And so it's the same thing. The advisory boards are set up pretty much the same way. They're either five or seven members, depending on the size of the community. We probably don't need for the five member or whatever, and, and we need to pick them out, and, and the board decide, or the council decide who, from what categories we need on that, and then the forms. Corvallis has a, a large amount of forms that are already, I mean, you can even do it electronically on, for the lodgers and everything, on, on the website. So there's things that we can look at, working with the, the programs that we work with in finance, and, and it can be easier on us, but we have a long task ahead, but that's a lot of money, and so we should wanna spend.
The other option, too, as Mike mentioned as well, is you can contract this out, and that might be worth having a third-party entity, so it's not a burden on town staff, because again, you have that third percent. You should be able to find a contracting agency that might, so that might be worthwhile as well. And that way, too, you've got somebody that can cha, that contracting agency's then responsible for registering businesses for, and also, then they chase all of the intermediaries, your, your different travel websites and all of that type of stuff. So you find one that's one of the bigger ones, and then that way, you know, you keep what's left after thirty percent goes in general fund, and then the rest of it, then you go through the advisory board, but then they handle the five percent rebate and all the other things that are required. So that might be a...
Are you, are you talking about like an actual contracted company or a group?
Yep, contracted company.
Not like the Chamber, not like...
No, this, we're not talking about contracting for how you spend the seventy percent. We're talking about contracting collective.
But finance administration, or...
Exactly.
Within the town or...
And then still out the advisory.
Correct, and then, and then the money comes into you guys, and then you deal with it, and that way, you're not having to fart around with, and then that company then is then responsible for doing some of the auditing and all of that type of stuff, so that would be, if it's not too expensive. It would be another option to look at, just for logistics, if you're not having to deal with it.
If you're worried to feel that it's too large of a load within the town staff, then certainly, we, you know, we should be open to looking at that.
But there's other companies...
There's a lot of money on the other side that...
There's other communities that are doing that, or staying?
In fact, the League of Oregon Cities even has a sample, um, agreement, and they are trying to talk to the state, and it hasn't happened yet, about the state collecting it, like they do with marijuana taxes. And that, ultimately, that would be the easiest thing for everybody to, is that everybody could get out of that business, because then it gets remanded, state comes in every, at the end of three months, and that has...
And he knows what those individual entities should be...
And then the state has the ability then to, because they do, you know, they do snap audits and stuff like that, but that's why it's not a lot of places have gone to the companies, but again, I, it just kinda depends on, so that would be something worth reaching out, in your smaller communities, see any of the smaller communities are gonna be using one of those contractors. The contractors may want, you know, over a half a million dollars in sales or something like that before they're willing to get involved. I don't know. It's, that, it's a logistics issue that I think we're gonna need to look into.
So I, I personally don't like that option, and there is some amount of overhead you're losing for the community. Because we're not gonna get a company coming into this community just to do this one project. You know, I mean, it's gonna be an out-of-the-air company that we're gonna end up hiring. So to me, you know, the county's not doing that currently.
Right.
I think we just keep it, and then figure out until the state starts collecting it themselves.
Right, and the League of Oregon Cities also has a set of sample forms for registration and that kind of stuff, too, so it's all there, and their forms seem to do a fairly good job as far as... So there's plenty of resources. I'm just trying to get you guys various options, how to do it at the end.
At a future meeting when we're lining out the lodger's tax advisory board, all the financial forms that have to be submitted by the lodger's facilities and whatever, but today we're looking at perhaps moving forward with the ordinance, which is intact with all that we've discussed.
The only thing that's not there is, it's, it does not reflect that new effective date, or whatever, so that's something you need to... And if I get enough time, or before the end of this, I can have my office shoot over another one with a different effective date. If you guys have a consensus about when you would want it to go into, if you're even ready to do it at that point. I'm almost recommending you don't adopt today, because I would recommend, again, I would like to present you with a package of the, it sounds like you guys want the lodger advisory board. That seems to be, you don't wanna contract with a third-party entity. Or if you do, it's gonna be the lodger advisory board suggesting that. And so I'm, what I'm understanding, and if this isn't your consensus, let me know, you guys wanna see the draft tax, but you also wanna see the ordinance resolution establishing the lodger's advisory board. And I think you may need to talk about that, too, because we might wanna present you some various options about makeup and stuff, and you guys make the decision, because again, it's, you guys can, I mean, you guys could have it, the lodger advisory board, be five random people off the street. I mean, that's legally, you're allowed to do kinda anything you want. You need to make a political decision, because it's not a legal issue, about who you wanna stake hold it on, so we can get you that information, how they're normally made up.
And I'll bring some of the information that we have from other communities here in Oregon and other communities that, that, that board consists of, so that we can design a...
So, last time we met, I was, I was hopeful that we could start this January one, just seemed like an easy date, but, you know, there's no difference on the date. I mean, bookkeeping will start when it starts, and it's no big deal. I just wish we could...
Fiscal year.
Yeah, fiscal year, but...
We felt maybe that might be when it patches up the most, or, you know, they, if you start in April, it might be an easier, you know, than this all of a sudden.
To work into it, yeah.
Plus you guys are actually, plus you guys are actually generating some revenue from this thing to deal with some of the initial overhead and whatever that's generating. Because again, there will be, the very first year you do this, it's gonna be more overhead, beginning all the setup stuff, all the legwork, everything else, if you're not contracting it out, than subsequent years, because again, we're starting, remember, we're going from something that should have happened maybe twenty years ago, and we're instituting that whole system that every, other places built up incrementally over that twenty-year period, so...
So my thought is, we should just table this in our regular meeting until we have additional information and make a decision about it, you know, read through that, and...
Okay, I think we're plodding the two together again, because we're, the only thing that I hear that we're differing on right now is, is whether it's six percent or higher, because I hear that we're all willing to take what other communities take. So if we set it at whatever amount, that goes into the contract ordinance, RD ordinance. The only other thing, Jeff, that you said that is, is lacking is...
We don't have the advisory board ordinance that I wanted to go along with it, although the other option would be...
Well, you said it didn't need to be included in there, I mean...
No, it didn't even be included, but I was gonna have a twin, but the other option is, make the effective date of this April first, and then before that goes effective, we get everything in place and present the other ordinance, and we work on the, constitute the advisory board.
But you said that one could rely on the other, so if we move forward with, I mean, we, we've spent a lot of time on this, there's nothing been changed over the last two, three meetings that we've had this. So if we move forward with the ordinance at a percentage that we're agreeable to, a consensus that we can agree to, and, I mean, is there still a difference in six percent? Do we want lower?
No.
Well, I, I've stayed it lower for the reasons I...
No, I understand that, but
But, you gotta vote.
Something to vote on, and I, you know, I'm, I'm willing to say six percent. If we need to go higher, I'll, I'll certainly go on.
So do you guys wanna do a delayed effective date, then?
I, then the delayed effective date, you said you could maybe get us that, and we could even change it today and move forward with the ordinance, because I think we need to go ahead and, and let people know we're gonna have an ordinance. The lodger's tax advisory board is, as you said, can be formed. We can vote as a council on how it needs to be made up, the makeup of that, and all the forms that we're gonna have to take into consideration. We can decide if we're gonna have an outside source handle that. But right now, the only thing that is holding this up in the ordinance is just moving forward and saying, let's, let's do it, instead of wasting more time.
Does the ordinance have in it that the advisory board will be set up?
He said it didn't need to be.
No, it doesn't need to, because again, that's a separate issue about how you're allocating.
But it just, and I see, I mean, it's saying that seventy percent will go to that, and then as a supplement to this ordinance, then we, we adopt that ordinance, which will happen way prior to our first collection
Correct.
the effective date.
Correct.
So I think, I'm agreeing with Mike that we definitely, there's no reason to hold on this. I mean, if we're gonna do it, let's do it, and then, um, you know, get that advisory board set up, and like any ordinance, we can repeal this later if we feel that
If it's bad, if we run into problems.
we're wasting too much overhead, and it is hurting our businesses, which can't imagine for a second it's going to. Um, even though some of them did say that...
So are you guys good with the April first date?
That's fine with me. I have, and I, it's a good, good reasoning behind it, so...
All right, well, when you get done with work session, we can have a few minutes. I'll see if we can't get that last thing tweaked, the last page tweaked for an effective date of April first, two thousand eighteen.
Does the ordinance say a percentage at this point?
It, it, the ordinance already says six percent, so you, you guys have an agreement on what it needs?
Cause I, I'm fine with that. I, that's my consensus.
Because if you guys don't have an agreement on the basic rate, you're not...
The number could change, I mean...
Well, not if, not if we, not if we adopted it. No, that, that's, no, best practice. You guys either need to know what you're doing with that or wait to adopt until you're sure what rate you're gonna choose. That's, that's the core of this. The rate, that's, like I said, it's an undependable thing, and that's, it needs to be...
Well, I, I think other communities get higher, but I, I don't think, starting out, that we should, we can raise it later. Our ordinance is not gonna, if we wanted to change in two years, I just noticed Corvallis changed theirs in two thousand seventeen. And it looks as though they, you know, went through procedures to do so.
Correct.
And, so we can make it and, and better it later on. It's not gonna affect us like it would the county and their ordinances, because they're gonna have to shift. Exactly, shift to a totally different system.
Okay, you know, you're in motion on one more question.
Well, we can, you can't do that, you're not...
So the unfortunate thing that we burnt all our time...
We'll do that next, on the next one, I'm sorry. The other thing we need to figure out, who's gonna be on the advisory board?
No, that's what we're, that's another meeting. That's what, this, right now, all we're doing is just moving forward with the ordinance as presented in our package
The advisory board will be another ordinance, a separate ordinance.
And starting in April of two thousand eighteen. That's the only thing, and I guess if we can vote on that in our next meeting, then it's adopted. So, are you guys wanting to do tonight? Press the council?
If someone makes a motion, I'll vote.
So we only have... We only have six minutes to. And we have one other item on our.
And we have to table it anyway, because I've only got response.
Oh, okay.
Two different towns on that.
Did you guys, did you guys want to mention anything about the smoking ordinance? Do you guys want to ask any questions about the smoking?
They haven't seen it, which they have right here, but, um, because we just finished it, but another thing that, you know, the council wanted a, a smoking ordinance, we talked about it for the parks and stuff, and, and I started it, Jeff finished it, um, so we, we've got it wrapped, actually, because we have to repeal ordinance five by three, which is a way old ordinance.
So the town, you guys are wanting to do a vaping ban ordinance in public parks, and as we were going through the old books, there is an ordinance on, there's an old ordinance that, that deals with obnoxious substances, in other words, huffing, which has been superseded by state criminal statute, and that's one of those areas, even with the town charter, criminal statute overrides, so this seemed to be a logical time to repeal. I, back in, back in early, back in seventy-two, there was no state ordinance on people sniffing paint or acetone, so the town made it illegal and it's a real random penalty, and I don't think I've seen a citation ever in my chart life, because again, people do it with the, so that's why I'm recommending that you remove that old ordinance with this. Anytime you guys will help clean up the town charter or town code through, I would recommend doing it.
That's pretty simple, right? Public code, correct?
Yeah, I like, but this is, this one is just a code, this is just.
So this includes all forms of smoking in, in, in public places.
And E S D.
Around the parks and everything that would, yeah.
Over is it all, it was like, so.
Yeah.
And this is.
We can, we can add it to the agenda as an addition to the agenda if we want, so.
So this falls at least with the state law as and law that we're doing as well?
Correct, I think this ordinance is from another community, what was the sample, I think it was Sweet Home?
So has, has, hello, police chief looked at this?
We just got done today.
So, but, in general, he's favored this.
Right, and we had a meeting with those, the people that wanted the, were you here, Darwin? We had that where they had asked to put up signs at, you know, for no smoking in the parks, and we were ready to do that, but then, you know, we really do need an ordinance to back it up.
Well. If we can add it, then it's a good idea.
Are we going to talk about the ground lease?
The what?
This lease?
Yeah, the ground lease, the LS.
Um, actually, you guys had asked me what other cities do, and the only two cities that responded is that they don't do it.
They just don't even worry.
Not to something like that.
I have no ordinance anywhere.
No, and so that's what I've gotten so far, and so I don't know if you want to delay that, and we're not many British, but, you know, it's.
Well, I, I would just delay it because I, again, missed out on, when you talked about it previously, it's one of the kind of.
But they wanted to.
Unaware of what it's all about.
They wanted to lease a ten by ten parcel right here by the, you know.
I kind of got that, but I didn't know exactly where it was located.
It's right by the, it's, you know, the alley that goes up by the Marriott.
Yes, I do.
It'd be just in the park, just put them up, or the whatever, set for that. And, you know, do we want to lease out part of our property for that? You know, that was the question, you know.
And how big a building do they want for that?
It's not a building, it's a circuitry of a, of grounded.
Correct.
It's six feet high, it's, it's a structure, I mean, it's.
So.
You know, I don't like that location, I'll just say that, I, I really don't, I mean, it's a park that's going to clutter the park with a, something that doesn't belong in a park, I mean, there are plenty of other places I think that we could find and they can find if county property, or town property is not the best. And I will mention, which I mentioned last time, the school board is looking at, you know, doing a similar thing with the cell tower kind of option, and, you know, this lease is extremely lower than what, you know, the school board is looking at, so. I, I just don't think that, um, you know, six hundred dollars really, you know, to put something on that spot is really worth it.
So what are they going to do with all this building? I can never believe that.
Do we not have the.
It's, it's kind of a blank. You know, the, the charter cable head ended up on the stock drive.
Sort of, yeah.
It's, it's a building that, that allows them to bring all of their cables and all of the houses together in one location. Well, this is fiber optics, I guess, into our community.
Yeah, it is, it's essential, it's.
And Freeland across the street around.
Yeah, it's a central switchboard basically for their, because LS is expanding pretty rapidly along the charter of bales, there's another, we do have a franchise agreement with them, so.
So charter is involved in this?
No, no, I'm just saying, they're, they're one of the, they're, they're a similar type of outfit to charter, LS, Hunter.
Have they, have they looked at any other location other than?
Fiber optic internet.
Um, my knowledge, no, they haven't, our engineer had talked to them about using this a long time before I was aware of it, so.
I mean, there's a lot going on down at the park, and I, I just, you know, a lot of kids walk up behind that, get up to the rest of the four areas, the bathrooms, and that, that totally blocks off really area where a lot of stuff goes through there, especially during swing time and other.
So it has to be close to a power line, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, I think it would have to be, you know, but I think that there are other locations.
And then probably the proximity to the CenturyLink's office right across the street, because they were talking about boring lines underneath the street, and we have lines there too, so that's a concern to me too. I, you know, I know we have lines under the street.
Well, I, I don't mind the location, it just wasn't right there next to the, you know, the ten score and everything. If you, we talked to you about that pad, I don't remember who asked it, but.
Of higher.
We were talking about maybe up on that pad that's already up there, you know, a little bit down from that, you know, a little bit of shrubbery that's there, and that might be a better, better spot.
I'll talk to them, if that's what you guys want to do then.
I just don't like it right up against.
Look, look and talk maybe with LS about alternatives, you know, if they're open to, otherwise, we may just have to say, internet.
They might be concerned about vandalism and stuff like that, but I think it just.
And that's not exactly.
They belong right there next to it.
Although, from what I understand, maybe this is just going to be shaved, it would take somebody with a jackhammer to get into there. I mean, this is a bunker.
Yeah.
Which is also negative, if you guys sort of don't like the aesthetics of it.
Well, and that's, I mean, just look at the picture, there was a drawing that was in the last meeting, I looked at, I was like, yeah, that's.
I will say, we have tweaked the thing to make sure that they can't just freely assign it or things like that, I mean, we, we've, we have made some tweaks to make sure that it meets legal specifications, but again, I think the practicalities of it are in your guys' court, this isn't something you have to do, we're not legally obligated to do this. You know, it's our property, we're allowed to do, unless we're doing something legal, whether we're allowed to designate it how we wish, it's just what you guys are interested in one way or another, so.
We want it, we need it, I mean, obviously, they need it, LS needs it, and we've been promoting that too, like in a franchise for a fair amount. So ultimately, I think we need to just find a better location.
And up there, we were talking about this kind of outside of my, yeah.
Yeah, just, I don't, I don't even.
Right down, right down where the big ice storm taking up part of the park, it's.
So it sounds like our feelings are, you can check with LS and see if they're open to alternatives.
I think they are, I mean, they're coming, they, they are, they've got the franchise with us, and we just have to have them at another location. Because that's what, when Hunter's asked us to, they wanted a, like a hundred by a hundred foot area, um, they ended up going out on, above Roberto, you know, where it turns and goes up into the first, you know, so they.
It's all there on the front.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's okay, yeah, I'll, I'll just check on them, they'll know that's fact.
We have anything else? That's okay, we're going to adjourn the meeting at four oh three, uh, we'll stick five minutes and then we'll resume to your council meeting.